It's six oh six, we might as well go.
I'm not sure I understand.
You never will.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda, we have facilities.
And I, um, we usually open up with a pledge, and I don't think there's anything wrong with us doing that.
Oh, okay.
So let's open with the pledge.
You just lifted off there.
When I gave it to Felicia, I didn't put it on there, so it's possible.
I was thinking.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that.
Now we'll start with facilities.
As you know, at our last special call meeting, the board did ask the LPC to look at a finding, and it would be finding number two, which would include changes to the current district facility plan to include items that were part of alternates six, seven, eight, and nine for the Estle Springs project. And what I did was I included for you to look at the minutes of that meeting and the exact wording that the LPC approved. And if you look at your facility plan, which is the second page, down at the bottom, under number two, the highlighted bold section under number two, that right below the number two that is struck through, it says LED lighting, intercom, clock system, technology upgrades, site work improvements, and canopies, security vestable, facility-wide security upgrades. That is the finding that the LPC approved at their meeting. So now, in order for us to move forward, we need you all as a board to approve the LPC's finding for Estle Springs Elementary, and that would be my recommendation.
I recommend that we approve the LPC findings at this time.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I make a second that we approve the LPC finding as noted in our paperwork.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Well, next we have to review and approve the change order number one for BG 239 Estle Springs renovation.
Okay. I know change orders sometimes leave a bad taste in everybody's mouth, but we discussed this at length at the last board meeting. This is not your usual change order, because when we approved the contract at the last special call meeting, we approved the base bid in alternates one through five. And if you remember, we moved alternate six, seven, eight, and nine because they weren't included in the LPC. Now that the LPC is met, had finding number two, and you all just approved it, now the items that's included in alternate six, seven, eight, and nine can be reinstated or reacted upon. So that's what this change order does. This change order adds back alternate six, eight, and nine to include the lighting, the security upgrades, the technology upgrades, the canopies, the secure entrances, all the things that the LPC added back to the district facility plan now can become officially part of this project. And what this does is this change order brings the contract back to the original contract. It does not add one red cent to the cost of that project. It is the same as you approved at the last regular called board meeting, and now it's back to the same items once we approve this change order. So that is where we're at, and I would ask that you all would approve the change order to add back alternate six, seven, eight, and nine. And this again is for Estle Springs.
I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Next, on the agenda, we have to review and select architect for the new bus garage.
I've signed the change order, so we can get it in in the morning. It's got to go in in the morning. Of course, we were asked to advertise for architects for the new bus garage, and we did that advertisement in the paper, and we received one letter of proposal for architectural services. And that's not really unusual, because this project is so closely tied to the building of the Creer Tech Center. You're not going to have a lot of architectural firms that's going to want to step in and be really battling neck to neck in two different projects. So the only firm that we received a letter of interest from was Ross Tarrant to be the architect for that project. And my recommendation is, is that we hire Ross Tarrant as the architect for the bus garage so that we can begin the process that we need to, to move our, build a new bus garage facility and move it from the high school location.
I make a motion at this time that we approve Ross Tarrant for the architect for the bus garage.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second that motion that we approve Ross Tarrant to be our architect.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Moving right along, we're going to choose a color.
Let me just give you a real quick update there, and we will pick a color in just a second. I have set up a meeting with Laura Arnold, who is the Division Manager for Career and Technical Education, to further discuss the Estle County ATC. Just for you all to know, at the board meeting this coming Thursday night, is that because the facility plan calls for a renovation of the bus garage, we may very well have to ask the LPC to come back together and do a finding to build a new bus garage. And if you, you have your facility plan in front of you there, if you look at that facility plan, it has an estimated cost for a new bus garage, and that estimated cost is $1.2 million to renovate that bus garage. We can build a brand-new bus garage facility for 1.7. So number one, why would you want to renovate an existing building for 1.2 when you can build a brand-new building for 1.7? And since it needs to be moved anyway, then it makes total sense to me that we need to reconvene the LPC to do that. I've also scheduled a meeting this coming Thursday with Judge Executive Williams and County Attorney Roddy Davis to continue discussions on the, or to continue discussions or begin the process to transfer the seven acres of property at the industrial park to the Board of Education. So those things are moving forward, so I just wanted to update you there real quick. And that's for the public to hear as well, so they'll know where we're at.
Okay. Now we will review the metal roof color for Estle Springs and the middle school.
You have your color sheet there, and the whole reason we went with a metal roof on these two projects was that we're hoping these are the last roofs to be put on these buildings. If Estle Springs makes it for the life of this roof, then it's going to be over 50 years old, that facility will. The middle school will be close to 50 years old at that point in time. So I think the roof color choice is important. Just remember, with faded roofs, any one of the board members that's not here tonight expressed concerns about choosing a roof color that was too dark, because as you know, metal roofs will fade. The architects on the very top line have suggested that they believe that it should come from that top line. And quite honestly, as I've looked at them, and I'll, you know, it doesn't really matter to me, but you know, my personal opinion is that almond is too light. I think that it will be more apt to show dirt, because it's more of a white than it is anything else. So it really leaves you with the choices of parchment and Sierra tan. The architect actually suggested parchment, because not only does it have a tannish tint, it also has a grayish tint. And if we buy the same metal for both roofs, roofs, we're buying in volume, so it's going to help on the price as well. And that's been the thought process, that the same color would go on both roofs from day one. My suggestion is to you all that we go with parchment, but if you all like Sierra tan better, they feel like that it will last as well. It won't be the same equivalent of going with a red or a bright blue. So I'm totally open. Doesn't matter to me. I do like the ideal parchment, because I think it does pull both colors. And if you think about the middle school, a lot of the work around the top of the building is a tan color. If you think about Estle Springs, it's got that red brick with gray mortar, and I think it will do well to pull the gray and stuff in that building as well. So I'm totally open for whatever y'all want to do. But we do need to pick the color, because they've got to order the materials if we're going to start that roof the middle of next month.
With parchment. Okay, I'll make the motion that we go with the colored parchment for both roofs.
Second.
Any discussion?
They already did it.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? We have a color. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have to consider or approve the high school site base request.
This request, they'd asked me about this, and I told them, I said, well, since it was a request coming from the school itself, I felt like it needed to come from the council. So as you can see, the council met there on June the 7th. And the request is, is that teachers that teach dual-credit classes do have to have a, um, a group of coursework that allows them to teach that dual-credit class. So it does take them sometimes extra classes in order to do that, maybe even above and beyond what their masters would call for. So the high school had asked about this before, and I told them, I said, I felt like it was best for them to request it, and we would discuss it here. I can tell you, as dual-credit has become really a big issue in this state in terms of being able to offer dual-credit classes, I do believe it is something that, it's a service to our parents, it also helps our kids, especially if it's the right dual-credit classes. There are some kids that, that are able to leave high school with almost a semester of college credit, some of them a little bit more than that. I have never been against dual-credit. I, I am very much in favor that if we offer dual-credit, it needs to be classes that kids can count. It doesn't just need to be busy work that doesn't count. And most of the dual-credit classes we are offering right now are either in math, science, English, or social studies. There are a couple elective classes, which, you know, they can count those electives, as long as there's not 10 electives, you know, they can count those. So I do not think this request is out of line. You're starting to see a lot of Board of Educations that award a stipend or a pay supplement for being able to teach those classes. They've asked for $1,000. I do know right now that the budget is tight. As you know, we've just cut several positions in order to do that. But I do think in good faith effort, we need to let those teachers know that we appreciate the fact that they've went above and beyond what would normally be called for, for them to do this. And I have no problem with the $7,000, other than it would be $7,000 based on the number of classes or teachers we have right now. And they, they have to be, they have to teach the class in order to get the supplement. They can't have the coursework and not teach the class. They actually have to teach the class if we do it as a stipend. I have no problem with the $1,000, other than the fact I'm, Angie and I have talked about budget. It's a little early for us to say we're out of the woods. We feel good about the budget, and we really do. I think we've got a conservative budget planned. But I will say this, just within the last two weeks, I made a decision that affects administrators here in the school district that's going to save the school district somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $6,000. I feel comfortable, if you all feel comfortable. I think we at least have to say something. I feel comfortable with $500 each, and there's a possibility that one more person could be added. That would be $4,000. It's not going to break us if you decide to do 1,000, but I can tell you that within the last week, Jeremy and I have been working on a situation that's going to save us around $5,000, somewhere in there. We can cover that cost with the savings that we just made. And then if we get into July and we see if we have a really good rollover, we might can come back then and raise it to 1,000 and look at it then. But I think we need to send the message tonight that, hey, we value what you're doing here, so yes, we're going to do something. And if we agree on 500 now, that would be my recommendation. But believe me, if you all want to jump and say, well, let's just go ahead and do the 1,000, we'll find it somewhere else, I'm good with that, because I think it's well-deserved. There's a lot of school districts doing this, and I just think it's something that we should consider. So my recommendation's 500 now. Look at it again in July when we have our rollover. Or we can do 1,000 now, and if we need to look at a cut somewhere else for another $3,000 or $4,000 in July, I'll do that as well. It doesn't matter. I think we can find the money either way.
We have a motion?
Do they already get a salary increase for getting that qualification?
In some cases, some of them had, but like I said, usually it takes, they, they cannot always get it in a master's program. If I go and get my master's degree, it's not in a sense that, let's say, for instance, I'm a math major, and I go and I get a math, a master's in mathematics, then that means that I take 30 hours in mathematics to get that master's. Most teachers do what's called a master's in education, and it's in math. So they may take out of that 30 hours, which is usually what a master's program is, 12 of it's math, but the other 18 deal with educational issues. So in order for them to be able to teach a dual-credit class, they have to have at least 18 hours. And that, now, and I'm speaking from what I knew about this several years ago. It may be more than that now, but usually it's at least 18 hours. That's graduate-level math courses that they have to have. So in a reality, they do have to take a couple of extra classes beyond their master's program to be able to do this, that they are not receiving paid for. It's just the fact they do it because, you know, they can teach those dual-credit classes. And quite honestly, you know, those are the top kids. So, you know, it gives them an opportunity to really teach that advanced-level math class. And, you know, if you're, if you're teaching, you like to teach those advanced-level classes, to teach those higher-level classes. So to answer the question, it does take some classes above the master's. If they do it as part of their rank-one program, somebody could probably legitimately pick it up during their rank-one, but you know, that's another 30 hours beyond that. They don't actually have to have a rank-one program. They only have to have a master's. They don't have to get a rank-one. So, so the, the answer to that is, it does take extra effort and extra money on their part to do it. And then our kids, in the long run, they, they're the ones that end up benefiting from that. And of course, parents do too. For every class they are able to get in high school, that's tuition for that three hours they don't have to pay.
And in the past, we've not offered a stopping for these classes?
We've not offered a stopping, no. I can tell you, my former school district did, and it's substantially higher than the 1,000 they're asking for.
Can you explain, and, because I know I can't explain it, that the whole, I mean, because I'm definitely for the dual-credit, but explain how the, when you say dual, that's high school and college, right?
That's right.
So it's additional preparation the teachers have to take as well, in time that goes into?
Yes. If it's done correctly, then they should be teaching the high school course in conjunction with the college course. So they have both sets of curriculum. They have the standards that a high school student should know, and they have the standards that a college student needs to know in order for the college to be able to grant credit in that particular class. For instance, a college algebra class is really about the equivalent of a pre-calculus class in high school. So there, there are some differences in terms of what they teach, because they have to meet both standards. That doesn't mean that you can take the standards for both of those classes, lay them down together, and there's going to be a lot of things that's going to overlap. But all the things that don't overlap, they're responsible for teaching to our kids as well. Because some of the things that's in, let's say, a college algebra class, there may be some other things that's part of that dual part, that's the high school part, that's going to help them prepare for the ACT that they may not have in that particular class. And especially in language, I would think that would be the part, because there's going to be particular works of literature that a high school class is suggested to read versus what they're going to read in a entry-level English class in high school. So yes, if it's done correctly, there should be additional prep time, there should be, and it does cost them more money to get the ability to do that.
I agree with Rhonda. I think the dual-credit classes is one of the good things that we offer at the high school. I think it's a very important part of our curriculum, and I know those classes really mean a lot when these kids go off to college to know that they have some of these undergraduate classes that are taken care of. I feel strongly about the fact that I think all of our teachers do an excellent job. I don't want to single teachers out specifically for a raise, but I do agree that these teachers do have to go above and beyond what's required to teach these classes. And I just feel strongly that we want to keep those teachers so that we can offer these classes to our students. And if it takes doing a stop, and I think that's what we need to move forward with.
I would like to make a motion at this time that, um, that we accept the recommendation from the Site Base Council, but I agree that perhaps we need to do the 500 first, to see how our budget works out with, with the possibility of revisiting that or adding on another additional 500 as we see how the budget shakes out.
And Angie, we will have a rollover probably early July, right? So we'll know by the July board meeting, and I can come back and recommend.
And I think that keeps everything cautious. It makes sure that we're on track with our budget, because this is something that came about at a later date. So that would be my motion and my recommendation for the board to move forward with.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
And I think that's, I think that is a good move, and what it will do is it may encourage some other teachers. We've got some other classes that could be offered, and maybe some other teachers now will step up and say, hey, you know, it may cost me an extra class or two classes, but within a year or two, I can recoup that. And, you know, you teach a long time, it, it makes a difference, you know? $1,000 over a 20-year period is $20,000. That helps a lot.
So as we move forward, we can revisit the possibility of adding another 500 for that.
And the other part of that is, is dual-credit classes is a big part of now the high school's accountability, the number of students that take dual-credit classes. And again, I don't want to get caught up in the fact we're doing dual-credit just to check off the box for accountability, because I still believe it has to be high-quality level instruction in order for it to count. But I do think it helps them in a couple of different ways, and it helps our parents and kids. So I believe that's a good move. Thank you all.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have consent items.
Consent items, we just put a few of them in here to try to reduce the agenda for next Thursday, but you have your KSBA recommended updates. That's, of course, from the General Legislature this past time. We've talked about the annual leave policy before, and it comes up every little bit in terms of... and it comes up every little bit in terms of the holiday and annual leave policy. The change that's been asked for in that particular policy does not increase the burden of the Board of Education. It doesn't change the fact, the, the fact that it takes 40 days stays the same. That is the limit on days that can accumulate. It just allows those days to accumulate a little faster. So if that policy is okay with you all. We have an MOU for adult education, as you know, with Fayette, not Fayette County, excuse me, Franklin County, and a consortium with Jackson. And I believe it's Lee and Bourbon in Franklin County and us. There's five counties that have come together to perform, to form a consortium for adult ed services. And I've included that MOU. And I've got it for your all's approval tonight. And it's for one year, renewable for two years, based upon performance criteria. And you can see the budget pages that are attached. But I have ensured that there is enough money in that budget to cover the salaries of the two employees that's in that position. And we really need to send them letters stating that, that is their assignment because right now, they've not received a letter, I don't believe. So I'm not sure. We'll check on that, but I want to make sure on that. But there is enough money there. I went ahead and signed it pending your all's approval tonight. And I think the last one is a KEDC grant application. It's dealing with career, it's dealing with some career different things. This makes the third KEDC grant we tried to become a part of. And with tight times, we need to be able to seek all the grant dollars that we can. And that one there deals with STEM education and also the possibility of a career counselor. And if that could happen, then we could take some other grant money to, to make that happen, I believe. And then we've got the payment of bills, which is the bills up through, I think, is up through early this week. I think it went through Monday. So that's the consent items.
I make a motion that we approve the consent items.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Moving right along.
Last thing, of course, is, of course, it's June, and it's time for my evaluation. What I tried to do for this meeting is it's not due until the regular called meeting. I did give you information in the last board packet, which had my growth plan in there. This is a, just a form for y'all to look at that may help you put together your thoughts in terms of each of the indicators that's under school culture, cultural leadership, which is standard three under the superintendent standards is what we agreed on last year. So that is what we are looking at. And then I think it's probably, to, to avoid the confusion, what I will also do with the next one is I'll bring back a copy of all seven standards so that you all can look at it for July to tell me what standard or standards you want me to focus on in year four. And I'll bring a growth plan back to you in August. And I know that's not really timeline for me, but I'm agreeing to that timeline with you all tonight, that I'm fine with that timeline. So I, I'm telling you tonight that I am okay with that timeline being as such. It sort of avoids the confusion that sort of comes with ending one and starting another one that same night is a little bit confusing. So we'll just do that in July. But here's the document, and you have place to comment after each of the standards and where you think that my rating goes. And then you can give an overall rating, which is on the next to last page. And whether or not I met or did not meet my growth plan. And then any comments that I may have that night after we discuss this, I can record those comments. And of course, it's for Rhonda and myself to sign. And this is to be discussed in open session. This is not a closed session thing. This is open session in terms of the overall performance. If there are specific indicators that you feel that there is, is major growth, then we may want to do that in executive session if you feel like there's something that's just, needs to go there. But we'll make that decision when we get to it. This will be the last item before executive session. I don't know of any reason we need executive session at the July meeting. Or I'm sorry, at this meeting coming up in, next week. But I'll put it on there just in case you all do need to discuss anything with me you feel like needs to be done in private. But this is just for your information. Try to make your job a little easier. And that's it.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.